Dominican Republic. So, this should be some bill.
Bienvenidos.
All right, first up, proclamation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Whereas dysautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in a malfunction of the autonomic nervous system, which is responsible for automatic bodily functions, such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control, and more. And whereas some forms of dysautonomia are considered rare diseases, such as multiple system atrophy and pure autonomic failure, while other forms of dysautonomia are common, impacting millions of people in the U.S. and around the world, such as diabetic autonomic neuropathy, eurocardogenic syncope, and postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome. And whereas some forms of dysautonomia can be very disabling and cause social isolation, stress on the family and those impacted, financial hardship, while other forms of dysautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous pain and suffering for those impacted and their loved ones. And whereas dysautonomia impacts people of any age, gender, race, or background, an increased awareness about dysautonomia will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier, save lives, and foster support for individuals and families coping with dysautonomia in our community. And whereas Dysautonomia International is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that advocates on behalf of patients living with dysautonomia and encourages communities to celebrate Dysautonomia Awareness Month each October around the world. And whereas we seek to recognize the contributions of the professional medical community, patients, or family members who are working to educate our citizenry about dysautonomia. Now, therefore, Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Dysautonomia Awareness Month in our city and invite all citizens to join us as we observe this month in an effort to increase awareness of this debilitating, sometimes fatal, disease. Is Crystal here? Otherwise known as POTS, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome so much. There you go. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the Salary Review Committee proposal. Jeanne Lloyd and Kim Gillis and the whole committee, come on up. I think we have enough.
I'm glad I didn't have to say some words now.
Just as a reminder, if you can, if you're going to participate, please speak into the mics, otherwise I get the merits from the camera, from the city clerk. Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, and I appreciate you accommodating the whole group coming forward. We wanted to stand here as a unified committee. So my name is Kim Gillis, and I have the honor of serving as the Chair of the Salary Review Committee, and I'd like to ask each committee member to introduce themselves, please.
My name's Gil Allen.
Winona Hocas.
Lily Tong.
Bob Moore.
Jennifer Jordan.
Great, thank you. And we were also assisted by Jeanne Lloyd, Human Resources Director for the City of Salisbury, who provided support to our committee, so we appreciate her time and efforts. So as you know, the goal of our committee was, the charge was to review the salary of the mayor and city council members and make a recommendation to the city council six months prior to the next election, with salaries to be effective in the fiscal year after the current terms have expired. So the committee convened on multiple occasions, July 25th, August 1st, August 21st, and September 11th, to review and discuss these recommendations. So to talk a little bit about the process in which we followed, we reviewed statistical data from Salisbury and numerous municipalities in doing some of our research. And again, I give a lot of credit to Jeanne, who pulled together the information for us. These municipalities were regional. We also Dover, Delaware, so across state borders. So we thought it was a pretty thorough representation of other municipalities. We also then moved on to reviewing the duties and starting with the mayor, trying to really understand the mayor's responsibilities and powers. We referred to the Salisbury Charter, Article 3-4. And I just want to highlight a couple of the items from that charter, where it says, "The mayor shall see that the ordinances of the city are faithfully executed and shall be the chief executive officer and the head of the administrative branch of the city government. The mayor is responsible for the administration of the city's affairs. The mayor, with the advising consent of majority of the full council, shall appoint the heads of all offices, departments, and agencies of the government of the City of Salisbury. The mayor shall have the power to veto, and the mayor annually shall prepare or have prepared a budget and submit to the council. He shall be responsible for the administration of the budget as adopted by the council." So we thought it was important to really have a thorough understanding of the immense duties of the mayor's office. One thing that we noted as we went through the research is there was no distinction as a full-time or part-time position. And we felt that that was something of note that our committee spent a lot of time talking about. Beyond referring to the Salisbury Charter, we also did some research with Maryland Municipal League. And from that began an understanding that there's a strong mayor-council form of government and a weak mayor-council form of government. Salisbury is a strong mayor-council, and we learned that less than 5% of municipalities are the strong mayor government format. So one thing that we learned from that is that it's a little bit challenging to do a comparison when we're looking at some of the other municipalities, because the form of government is a little bit different. We understand that Baltimore and Frederick are also strong mayor-council forms of government, excuse me. And interesting to note that Baltimore and Frederick mayors are full-time positions. So we thought that was interesting in our research. So in summary, the mayor of the City of Salisbury is the chief executive officer of a $58 million organization, employing approximately 430 employees, with the responsibility for a city of approximately 33,411 people. Wow. So we also spent some time talking about the evolution of the office and kind of the state of the city and where we are and where we believe things are headed. And so I want to note a couple of highlights in that research, in that Salisbury is the number one fastest-growing city in Maryland. Salisbury is the economic capital of the eastern shore. 91.9% of all business revenue in Miccosukee County is received in the city. And 83% of all employment in Miccosukee County is within the city. We went from being the 42nd fastest-growing job market in America in 2015 to the 7th in 2016, so marked improvement there. In our letter, which you all have, we noted the relationship with SU. We recognize that the city has an important relationship with many of the major institutions and business organizations in Salisbury. We specifically looked at Salisbury University because of the new branding campaign with Maryland's Coastal College Town. And also the economic impact that SU has on our local economy, which a 2016 Beacon study said that SU generates $480.5 million to our local economy. So again, we felt that was really important to look at as part of the big picture. In summary, the City of Salisbury, kudos to the hard work of all of you sitting up here, is on an upward trajectory, and we're moving in the right direction. And we all feel we need to continue to focus time, efforts, and energy accordingly to ensure that we stay on that path. So with that said, our first recommendation that we brought to you is that we propose that the mayor of the City of Salisbury become a full-time position with a salary of $75,000 annually and benefits in accordance with the city's employee benefits program. We believe that this is fair and reasonable to ensure compensation is commensurate with the immense duties of the job. And we feel that it's of utmost importance in order to be competitive, in order to attract and retain qualified candidates for this position. So moving on to the process by which we followed for the city council, it's a little more brief. Again, we started out by reviewing the statistical data from Salisbury and numerous municipalities regionally. We also reviewed the U.S. inflation rate as published by the U.S. Labor Department. And we really used that as the basis of our recommendation. So from that, we proposed an 18% salary increase to the city council president and city council members based on an approximately 18% increase in inflation since 2007, which is the last time the salary was increased for the city council. And prior to that, it was 10 years before those salaries were adjusted. So with that, the city council president would see an increase of $2,160, bringing the salary to $14,160 annually. And city council members would see an increase of $1,800, bringing the salary to $11,800 annually. Again, we believe that it's important in order to continue to attract highly qualified candidates to the city council and in order to reward the hard work, time, and dedication required by these positions. So I think that concludes, unless anybody up here wants to add anything to our recommendations.
Would anyone like to add anything? All right, then, if not, I'll open the floor to questions. Anybody?
It was really quiet there. That was interesting. Would you like recommendations?
I would, under, just one comment I would like to make. I believe, I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. I believe in the charter, the position is a full-time position, is it not?
After reviewing it, doesn't specify it.
It doesn't specify? No, I was under the impression that it was always a full-time position.
No, we couldn't find any language indicating full-time or part-time either.
Okay, fair enough. Recommendation?
No, it's just if we're, if we are going to move forward with the recommendation and clarify something for 2019, or would you like us to do that now, start that discussion now, or?
Yeah, start it now, yes.
Yeah, I just, you know, over the years of sitting through these and talking about these, it's very nice that we want to do that, but we are obviously, in my opinion, not big enough to do that. So having been in the position and having tried to straddle two jobs at the same time, I understand that it should pay more. Obviously, it should pay more. But it is not a career. The mayor of Salisbury is not a career. So my recommendation to you all, over the years of doing this and being involved with us now since about 1993, is probably somewhere in the range of $32,000 for the mayor, about half of that for the city council president, $16,000, and then the other council members at about $13,000. It definitely needs to go up, there is no doubt about it. It is not sleepy-hollow. It's not, even at the end of Mayor Martin's days, it's nowhere near what that was like. And the amount of, through MML, the amount of responsibilities with open meetings, the amount of responsibilities with government accounting standards, which we all have. When you all aren't here, that's what we're doing, dealing with government accounting standards, saying that you have to have all the money for employee retirement in the bank. And it just, it's incredible. Simply the wastewater treatment plant, what I lived through with that, what I now know in my head, which was not in there before, which I didn't know whether or not I really wanted it in there, but it was in there now, it is much more complicated. It's much more legal. But it is not a full-time job. And we are not the size of Frederick, we're not the size of Baltimore. So my recommendation to my colleagues is, like I said before, and these can be moved around, talked about, shifted, but my recommendation, as I sat down and looked at years past, was about 32, 16, and 13. So that's just what I wanted to add.
Mr. Rudess, any comments?
Uh, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I think on one regard, I do agree with Jim that the salary does need to be adjusted for both jobs. And I know, especially for the council, when I talk to other council members and commissioners from other towns, big and small, I mean, we meet four times a month, at least. Jack and I have a Tuesday morning meeting for legislative agenda. So for Jack and I, that's eight meetings a month, plus our committee assignments, which can be another four or five meetings a month that are specific council duties. Some councils meet once a month, some meet twice a month. County council only meets twice a month. So as far as workload, to some extent, the city council is more. As far as, when you look at, you know, we are a city that has approximately 33,000 residents, but how many people actually work in Salisbury, shop in Salisbury? If you compare some of those other cities as far as their police departments, I mean, our police department answers about 55,000 calls for service a year. Now, that's not, that's almost two, 1.8 per resident in the city. So as far as what's happening in our city, as far as economic activity, I think sometimes you have to look at some of those other cities as well. Does Dover's police department have that many calls for service? They're also a state capital, so that's another little, you know, thing in that pot. I, you know, I, you know, I think the, you look at it also, the city is a, what would somebody who was running a $50 million, $58 million business, what would the salary be for that CEO? That's also how I look at it. So I do not think that 75,000 is, I think that's about the range for that. That's my personal opinion.
Me, I guess. Well, where's this money coming from? Because first of all, we've already had somewhat of a tip about raising war and store. We've had that about raising taxes. I do agree to some extent that we do need an increase, but do we need that much of an increase? No. That's just my spin on things, because are we trying to help the economy? Or are we trying to hurt it? That's mine.
Okay, let me make just a couple of comments. If you look at the business world, I will tell you that a $55 million budget, CEO of that size, would be somewhere between 65,000 and 80,000, depending on the business itself. I have mixed emotions. And essentially, the mixed emotions are, if you have someone run for city council, I mean, for mayor, and you pay them $25,000 a year, you better find somebody with a heart of gold who wants to work their tail off for almost nothing. And we've managed to do that many times. However, I look at the other side of it, and the other side of it tells me, if there's a vacancy in the mayor's position, don't we want to attract the top talent that's available? And by keeping it $25,000, we are eliminating, for instance, a guy that's got a couple of kids, is a solid businessman, and wants to do a good job. And if he's going to do that good job, any CEO worth his salt, and I know this mayor, and I'm not just, I'm using him as an example, but I know this mayor spends 10 to 12 hours a day at this job, not counting Saturdays and Sundays. Not saying that every mayor has done that, but we've had mayors that have done that. And I just think we're being penny-wise and pound-foolish if we do not make it available for people who want to do the job, that aren't independently wealthy or retired and have a good nest egg and want to do it at that price. I don't think we're going to reach consensus tonight. I know we're not, because we already have stated there's varying opinions. What I'd like to do, and we have to, we have to get this done, and I commit that we will get it done, but I would like to take it to the next work session where we can spend, we can do our own, we can do our own analysis and then have a discussion with a shorter agenda, because we have a larger agenda tonight. But I think that's, that would be my choice, and I think we'll do that if I have consensus from the council. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that. You touched upon several things that I'm concerned about. Then I also want to think about, and I want citizens to think about the electoral process. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're fine, go ahead.
All right. Because there are several voices in the city that certainly aren't being heard, because there's not a sufficient incentive, like you just said, Mr. President, you know, for the individual that has jobs, has family. They aren't going to rather have the $25,000 on their job, because it will be too much of an impact on their everyday welfare. And when people aren't willing to eat them, there are often the voices that go on, and there's voices that go on as issues go on, and that's regardless. There are several factors that come forward in every level of process. I have in class, we'll use that, but do you need any critique up there? I'm not sure if $75,000 is the appropriate figure of this coming climate of the truth.
Okay, I think we've got that. Before we let you go, I really want to thank you. This is, this is one of those jobs where you go, oh, boy. You can't win. You can't win. But believe me, you've won. And you've won because you did your homework. You did what is right, what you believe is right. I don't know where we're going to end up. I think we're going to end up hired in '25. But I'm not sure exactly where that is. But your hard work and your diligence is very much appreciated by myself and the rest of the council. And we hope you don't get too much grief outside the room. But thank you very much for doing what you've done. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, that'd be fine, thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Nichols, I think we're going to need the air conditioning on.
Yes, sir.
It is getting warmer. All right, next up on the agenda is the chronic nuisance legislation. Susan, how are you? Just to recap where we left off at the meeting last week, there were certain items that were discussed in the comments from the audience. And the mayor had indicated that he was going to ask you to go back and look at some of the specific areas.
Yes.
And could you update us as to where we are and use that, so we can use that as a starting point?
Yeah, I provided a memo to each of you with the notes that I was provided from that meeting. And they were to clarify multiple fines and violations in one visit that will only count as one call for service. That was one of the items that we wanted to have clarified. Possibly, possibly take out nuisance violations from calls for service, and then change in calendar year from March to February to correspond with their rental renewal cycle. And that's what was brought back to me. I'm sorry for missing last week.
Okay.
We also wanted some sort of clarification from Mr. Tillman about what the law and case law says about who's responsible for that property. Because that was the other thing that was brought up several times.
Do we talk? Pardon? I say, you ready? Yeah, as far as the, the point of this legislation is to basically make the owner take responsibility for what goes on in their property and not to wash their hands of it. I think the way this legislation, which has actually been in effect for some time now, we're just really, this resulted not from new legislation, but from an attempt to change that legislation to make enforcement easier and to add, you know, calls for service to the police department, to the nuisances that were already previously covered, or the, you know, more condition-of-the-property-type calls that were already covered. So I think the answer is yes. Because of the nature of the penalties here in, you know, affecting someone's rental license and things like that, because of that business taking place on a property, yes, you can hold the owner responsible, I believe. And, you know, all of these, there's more problems involved when it's, you know, owner-occupied, as we all know, but because there's no license to take away. But, you know, at that point, you could, those people could at least be declared a nuisance property at some point, possibly. But, yeah, I mean, yes, I think the owner can be held legally responsible for the property, I don't think there's any doubt about it.
I guess maybe, my concern is, the owner could be held responsible. I'd like to know whether or not case law throughout this state says that the owner is responsible.
Well, what?
Because the question from the industry was, we should be holding responsible the people who live there and not them, and not the people who own it. I wanted to know from case law throughout Maryland.
Well, the way in which the owner is primarily held responsible here is ganking the rental license. And yes, you could do that.
I'm not sure that answers it.
What?
Trying to figure out whether or not there's precedent, because what I don't want is for a case to go across the street to a judge, and we, you know, therein lies where most of this city's problem is right now, with, "Oh, I don't like fees, it's down to a dollar." You've looked through that for years. "I don't like this, I don't like what you all have on today. There's too much noise in my courtroom." I'm trying to figure out from a legal standpoint, is making the homeowner responsible for what goes on there going to hold up?
In court.
In court.
The way this is, well?
Because for the people who live next door to these places, it's not just, it's not just, it's also the Housing Board of Adjustments that, in my opinion, has previously been like, we believe that that is an overreach. You're not, you're not supposed to decide whether or not it's an overreach. Your job on that board is to decide whether or not the housing, the housing authority person was correct in writing this violation. So those of us who have to live next to some of this stuff, live through that board, smacking stuff down, and then it goes over to the court, and it's the same thing. What I want to make sure is that whatever we do here, and that's something we'll all have to come up with, because I'm not, I don't know where I am with all this, trying to figure out whether or not,
If it's such a stone.
If it's, if it's, if it's going to hold up to the light of day in the courtroom.
I wasn't told before I came here tonight that someone wanted specific citations, but I have researched this in the past. And I can't quote those cases for you without pulling out my old file. But the answer is, if a property is, if the residents of that property are behaving in an illegal fashion over and over again, you can't hold the landlord criminally responsible, but you can make the owner of the property responsible for the people that he allows to continue to live there. And that's really what this, the point of this. That if there's somebody who is just a complete nuisance to the neighborhood, and the landlord says, "But he pays his bills every month," you know, then, you know, yes, you can do something about that.
Okay, that's clear. The other thing that was, if I'm not... it sounded like it was written this way, but then there was a question whether it was or not, and that is if a person goes, inspector goes and finds five violations on the same visit, is that one?
That's one.
Okay.
That's one. And we can make that clear in the language.
Okay. That was an important one.
Yeah, that's on line 45, I think.
That would only be one.
Gotcha. Okay. Let me just go through the rest of my notes, make sure.
Yeah, line 45.
I think that.
No.
Oh, there was another one about if there's a trespass by non-residents on the property and there's a service called by the landlord, does that appear on there? Do they get gaged for that?
We did, Chief Duncan and I did not specifically discuss trespass because there's going to be, I think we could discuss some.
In that situation, wouldn't the landlord be considered the victim if he's trespassing somebody from his property?
We don't want to, we don't want to make a tenant or property owner, if they are a victim of anything, we don't want to have that charge be, you know, be one of those numbers at all.
Yeah.
So if they would be in that category of victim of anything, that would not be one of those.
So I think the other thing, and one of the things the mayor mentioned last week is what type of, when there's a police call for service, a qualified police call for service, so how are we going to, number one, qualify that call and say that it counts as a point? And then do we have a timeline that we notify the property owner? And who's going to be monitoring all the hundreds of police calls for service that we have a day in this city and then qualify one to a property and then notify the property owner that he's got a point? And then, you know, how do we determine that?
It would be the HCD that would notify the property owner once they get to number five. So they would have a warning once they get to number five that they are getting close.
Okay.
So we don't want them to get to number seven and bang, they get a letter that, you know, you're getting pulled.
Yeah, I mean, certainly if they get a situation where they get a citation and then they get fined because it wasn't taken care of, and that, at that point, it's a point.
Correct.
But if it's, you know, a police call for service in the early phases of it, you know, how would they, how would they know that that's counting against them?
Right. So that, as far as the police calls for service, Chief and I are going to have to work something out as far as that's concerned, because in my code enforcement database, we have to actually check, it's a force field. We can't go any further in the program to even create a case number without checking if someone is a repeat offender. So we have to go back and look because it tells us how many times we've been to a certain property. So we know right then that each time we visit a property, Chief Duncan and I can work something out. We are in the middle right now with IT of combining a program that, what I'll be able to look at every time we write something up, even holistically, I'll be able to look at everything, even how much is due on the water bill, building permits, everything. So everything's going to be there soon. So that very soon will all be together, and that won't even be an issue. In the meantime, we all have to get together. So I'm not going to, I will never gig somebody and say, oh, I'm sorry, we got, Chief Duncan and I got our cross pass, but you have 10, and I didn't give you any warning, so here we are.
Wouldn't you, in that process, wouldn't you at 10, look at it and say, wait a minute, this one shouldn't ever have been?
Absolutely.
And then you can pull that out and it goes below the number.
Absolutely. Yes. So some people may have 10, but they would not be qualifying. So they would all have to be qualifying because someone, it could have been a traffic stop in front of the property, but it could have said, Tuesday or Sunday, West Main Street. It was just a traffic stop. That's not their fault. So there's all different qualifiers.
And I'm sure that the landlord would bring it to our attention if there was such a notification.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I just went to a house today that someone kicked the back door in, and it wasn't their fault. It wasn't the owner's fault. So that wouldn't have been a charge against them.
Good. Okay. I think I've got all the ones on my list.
And currently I do have the calendar year starting January to December. I'm not sure who made the recommendation to change it to March to February just to coincide with a rental renewal cycle. I can do that if that's the consensus.
It was, I thought what we said was calendar year, wasn't it?
That's what I always heard, calendar year.
Calendar year is just a little bit easier because it's consistent. That's how we do a lot of the reporting in the office.
Right, because the registrations couldn't.
Yeah. So I prefer to keep a calendar year, and that's what it has in the legislation.
Yeah.
You know, better than me.
Yeah. Okay, we'll keep it a calendar year. That's all the notes that I had.
Okay.
If anybody else had any others.
I don't have any. We do have some requests to speak on this issue. I would just ask that we keep it to like three minutes if you can. I think we've covered pretty much the things that were discussed last week. If you have additional comments, please cover those. If they have to do with the same ones we just went over, please ignore those. And we do have one additional comment that, and actually, we'll start with that one. Sheila McQuinn, could you come up to the podium and?
I wanted to bring to your attention, I'm so happy that you're doing something proactively about the problem of nuisance properties. I'm a little bit representing also my daughter, Molly Heligoss, who's executive director for Habitat. She couldn't be here this afternoon. There's an area of town, of course, where they're targeting, trying to improve the areas and so on, but there are certain nuisance properties that are causing problems for the part of the neighborhood that is trying to regroup, and there are solid neighbors and so on, but yet one home can cause an issue for all the other homes, where the people that are, you know, solid neighbors, you know, want to leave because one is so egregious. And I know it was brought up about the issue of domestic violence, that perhaps a number of the police calls are pertaining to that. And I wanted to raise the point that there's a problem with boundary setting, often in families with domestic violence, and I think sometimes the city's approach to this could help in the boundary setting. And that, and I know, I heard you mentioning that it wouldn't count if someone was a victim, but sometimes there still needs to be an assistance in the boundary setting. So perhaps if there's charges filed or something like that, then that would be a reason not to have a point, but if you have a repeated situation where that's part of it, and which can get extremely violent with people shooting guns and throwing things and up and down the streets and on and on. So I just really want to, you know, encourage the, you know, the legislation and also bring to mind that there are some uses of technology that can also be supportive, like for instance, Ring.com has a neighborhood program that they give a discounted video and spotlights for trespassing and for issues, so that, and then they keep a, it's like a very minor charge, like $3 a month for videotaping what's going on outside the properties. And so maybe some use of technology in certain targeted areas that are worst issues might be considered as an adjunct to support the efforts of both the community and the city to try to straighten these problems out.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, we have three other requests on this topic. Let's remember the rules of the road. Brett, why don't you start, please?
Brett Hopkins, landlord in the area, currently president of Sapoa. I've submitted my comments via email as part of a red line to, I think, Susan's document that was read a week ago, Monday. So I'll just go through that, and I think you've already touched on most, if not all the points. So we're going to be using the calendar year, the 12-month fixed calendar year. I'd like to add, under exclusions, as part of the victims, as the landlord being the victim, untagged and expired tag vehicles. Oftentimes, vehicles are dumped in front of our property, and we're the ones calling the PD and eventually the towing service to get them gone. If not, if there are tenants' cars, we handle them with the resident, and the resident pays to have them removed. So if we call, just like for property trespass, a vehicle that's untagged or expired-tagged, we don't want that to be one of the hits on our property. As part of Susan's department, I'd like to have, if possible, if multiple calls are made by Salisbury PD to a property on the same day, if that would also be one hit to the property. Like if a party has gone wild and we call at noon for help at 4:00, 8:00, all the same day, we don't want that to be three PD calls against the property. We'd like to have that also be considered one call, because it's really one event that's triggering the three calls. But if it carries over from 10:00 at night to 2:00 in the morning, yeah, that can be two calls. You know, we're not trying to overcomplicate this. And I want to make sure that when the landlord responds to a letter or a citation and remedies the situation, grass cutting, a problem tenant in terms of grass or loud noise, that, again, if it's on or before the due date, that that ticket is not counted in the ticket count. The way I read the ordinance, that would, even if we did perform, it would still be a violation. So I'm just trying to make it explicit that if landlord performs on or before the due date, no fine is issued, then no ticket is accounted to the property. I put in my comments about somehow Salisbury PD notifying the landlord that the PD call has been issued so that we can then start working with the tenant to remedy the situation, because I think that's the goal, and we agree with the goal, to get the tenant to perform in a civil manner where the PD is not called. Okay, so, but we need to be notified somehow, some way, so that we can get engaged with And going back to what Mr. Tillman said on striking out approximately line 106, the owner of the rental shall be responsible for the chronic nuisance violations of the tenants. We would just like to see that stricken from the ordinance, because that is hard to believe that that would ever hold up. We agree with the crime and punishment herein, okay? We think that you should take our license to that property if, in fact, we can't remedy the situations, the violations. But we don't need that in this ordinance. If we could just strike that, because we know you're going to take our license, because the ordinance says you're going to take our license, and if we get that far, seven or more violations, we deserve that punishment, we don't need to have that in here, because it's hard to believe that would hold up in court for anything, because that's the way it's written. For any violation, which includes a PD call, we're not responsible for the resident of that house in terms of their behavior in PD calls. Grass cutting, sure, but not drug violations, not rape. Okay? I think that's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Danny Mars.
I'm going to try to make it simple. I think if we could change the language from violations, which are the minor letters that are written to be corrected, if we can change it from violations in your code to citations, that will eliminate the landlords that are attempting to do a good job in the I'm assuming that the target here is to make it harder on the landlords that excuse them, and you end up taking it to court every month for not completing their violation notices. So do you agree with that, Susan? I mean, is that, because the way it's written right now with violations, you know as well as I do, you could hammer just about any house once a month, and you could find one violation, if you wanted to. That's a scary thought, because once this passes into law and it's not reasonable people operating your department, you could clobber somebody quick, even somebody that's trying to do the right thing. So I think that is a very important, very important part of the law that needs to be changed, the proposed law, the code enforcement. So you don't, I don't, I'd hate to see landlords that are here every day, working the neighborhoods, be punished because you have some landlords that don't try at all. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Next is Richard Ensley.
I subscribe to what both Brent and Danny have said, and I have a couple of additional things to add to that. And I mentioned, I think, most of these in the public hearing. First of all, line 139 changes the word receipt to service. This has to do with giving notice to the property owner, and as I've mentioned before, it's important that remain receipt, because unless the notice is actually received, the property owner cannot be aware of the need to file an appeal. So they should certainly, not under any circumstances, not be aware of the action that is going on or proposed. The second thing is, there is a provision for a, this is line 141, 142, there's a provision for a $100 fee in order to file an appeal. And I recognize that is in the ordinance presently. I've never thought that that was a fair thing to do. $100 to some people is a lot more money than $100 might be to you or me, and money should not stand in the way of a person's opportunity to appeal or adjudicate a grievance. And it shouldn't necessarily be dependent on whether they win or lose. A person should have an opportunity to have their day in court, so to speak, in this case, before the Board of Appeals, without regard to whether they have $100 in their pocket or not. So I'd recommend that that be changed. Even the district court, a complaint is only $15. The third thing is lines 160 to 163, provide for a fine of $500 per day. Mentioned this in the public hearing. A visit which produces 10 violations, at $500 a day is $5,000 a day. If it lasts for 30 days, that's $150,000. That is clearly unreasonable. But the biggest point in this, I think you want to look at, is that the reader or the listener or the viewer will quickly draw a conclusion that the city's position is unreasonable, and not only that, but then wonder, what else is the city doing or saying or requiring that is unreasonable? It's damaging to credibility when you have something that is clearly unreasonable as the amount of the fine. the amount of the fines. And finally, this is not a part of this ordinance, but one of the probably most frequently-written citations has to do with the grass in the curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And I don't know why this hasn't been contested before now, but one day it's gonna be, and the issue here is, who does the curb, gutter, and sidewalk belong to? In many instances, the property line ends at the backside of the sidewalk, meaning the house side of the sidewalk, not the street side of the sidewalk. So it begs the question of, can the city, or is it reasonable for the city to cite adjacent property owner for grass that's growing on the city's property, curb, gutter, or sidewalk? So that's something-
So let me understand this.
Sure.
You're saying that in front of your rental, on the, between the sidewalk and the street, you'd let your grass go three feet?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. The question-
Sounds like it.
The question, well, the question that I'm raising is, there are a lot of instances, properties in the city where the sidewalk is on city property, and then sometimes there is even a space, Riverside Drive's a perfect example, there is a six- or eight-foot space between the sidewalk and the street, and that space is, belongs to the city. The property boundaries, monuments, are on, not the street side of the sidewalk, but the opposite side of the sidewalk. It's commonplace for citations to be written to the property owner, which is the adjacent property owner, for grass that's growing in the curb, gutter, or sidewalk, or the median between the sidewalk and the street. Is that clear?
It is, but if you're saying that you're gonna contest that, my response would be, bring it on.
Well, I'm just-
I just, it just, that makes no sense to me. I'm sorry.
I don't understand.
Well, we're supposed to cut it, is what you're saying.
Well, what I'm saying is that the person who owns the property is supposed to cut their own grass.
Well, we own the property, is what you, so then we should cut the grass.
In some places, I think he's saying it happens.
Yes. There's, where the property is owned by the landlord, the property owner, might even be a homeowner, they're certainly responsible for cutting their own grass.
Okay.
But there are many, many instances where the city owns the grass that needs to be cut. And the problem that I'm pointing out is that in some instances, the city is citing the adjacent property owner for the responsibility of cutting the city's grass. Is that clear?
No.
It's not?
No.
Let me say something to you, Mr. Ensley. For example, I'm not for sure who it was that made that statement last week about them, let me make sure, let me get my notes, because I do keep some notes, about the substation, and them leasing it to the city police station for a substation. And the realtors or landlords are being fined, but not the city. Is that where you're, is that kind of where you're at?
No, no, it is not.
Okay.
No, we're, let me, let me try to explain this-
Can you give me an example of, give me a property that you're talking about?
Take Pinehurst Avenue, for example. The property, the resident, the property on which the residence is built, that property extends to the sidewalk, but does not include, and the boundary, the property marker, the monument, concrete monument, is adjacent to the sidewalk, on the house side of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
The sidewalk lies on city property, and then there is a grass strip between the sidewalk and the street that belongs to the city as well, and then you get to the curb, and the gutter, and certainly the street. Does that, does that make sense?
I don't understand what you're saying. Yeah, it does.
I'm, I'm missed, to be honest with you.
No, I mean, there's, there's some, I know like when I bought my house, the property line was to the curb, and then we were told by the city that we had to put a sidewalk in. So, but the side, in my situation, the sidewalk is on my property, but there are, there are some instances where-
It's somewhere near the city.
Where there are places in the city where the property line ends where the sidewalk begins, and then they have that grass between the sidewalk and the curb. So I guess it's a property-by-property situation, over the course of time, you would have to see-
It's different in different subdivisions.
Where the property lines are done, and you would have to look at the deed from when that was done.
Or the survey.
So for those properties, that's where I go back to my original point.
Yeah.
For those properties, you're saying that the city is responsible, and the grass could be let up three feet tall, without the person who owns the house having any responsibility?
If the three-foot-tall grass is on city property, yes. So what I'm saying is, that the property owner should not receive a citation for not cutting the city's grass. That's, that's the point that I'm making.
So what you would do, as a property owner, you're saying, would be you'd cut your grass, and then stop at the sidewalk, and let the grass grow wild?
No, in many instances, in fact, most instances, probably the property owner, the homeowner, the resident, or whatever, is cutting that grass. But what I'm saying is, when it comes to issuing a citation for grass growing in the cracks of the sidewalk, or the curb, or the gutter, be cognizant of the fact that the city is citing people for a violation that's occurring on city property. That's simply what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just answer one thing, as far as the amount of the municipal infractions as being 500, and where it says 500 for each day, that the violation remains uncorrected, that is, those words are verbatim from the state code, our citations are taken exactly how the state of Maryland does their infractions, and we just piggyback off of them. So it's not the city is doing that individually. We model the states.
Susan, also, the judge, when there's a violation, or multiple violations, always takes that into consideration.
Yeah, and we've never issued 30 days worth. We've never issued more than two.
Right. And we, I've never seen more than two issued, and the courts, you know, are always waiving a part of that for the benefit.
The judge will never allow us to issue 30 days worth.
That is taken care of by the court system.
Yes.
And just a couple of responses, relative to Danny's thing about the, it was a, it was Danny, about the $100 and being a lot of money. The next topic on our agenda is the hardship waiver. So I think that that'll be handled during the hardship waiver discussion, because we agreed that the hardship waiver should apply to any violations. If someone's in a position where they are under hardship and can't do it, then they could apply for a hardship waiver. The other, Brett brought up a point about the five calls on the same day. I think at some point in time, we can't legislate down to the net, but I think you have to give this credit, if we've negotiated some of these points back in, common sense has to take over. When the officer and Susan get together, then they'll make the determination as to what, you know, if it's five separate fights and two things, you know, that's a different story, but I think common sense is gonna have to take by, because we can't make legislation that's gonna apply to every single solitary point. That's all I had for, but we have another person who wishes to speak, Lynn Bratton. Lynn, if you'd come up to the podium, please.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Lynn Bratton. I live at 303 South Boulevard, Sault 3, Maryland, and I just broke your microphone.
We'll send you a bill.
I'm sure. Yeah, okay, thanks. I'm short, sorry. I am a resident of the city of Salisbury, I'm also a property owner of some rental properties in Salisbury, and I have a couple, real quick little comments and questions. One of the things that I thought was gonna happen, Mayor Day had suggested that we get some data, perhaps you all have gotten it, but this is the work session, so I was wondering where that data was, concerning like how many actual properties at this point? This has been on the books for a while, how many have actually reached the five in the past few years, when we've had this ordinance already on the books, because it has been at five for a number of years. So how many properties are you really looking at, that have already gone into that nuisance category? Because, you know, we may be having a lot of discussion about five people, and it kind of goes back to when I was a schoolteacher, that everybody writes sentences because two people didn't turn in their homework, but everybody gets punished. So I kind of don't like that method of leading with the broad brush, of punishing everybody because two people don't do what they should be doing. So I was concerned about hearing the data, and I thought that had been something that had been requested. We really didn't get any data today about how many citations, how many have been corrected, how many are still outstanding, how many properties are we still looking at? I mean, there's gotta have, we gotta have some validation with data, in my opinion. I 100% absolutely hope that there can be something put in writing about efficient notification of police calls. Right now, there's absolutely no question about, if I have a corrective action letter from the city, that's sent to me, I get it, it's posted, everybody knows it, you act on it, you fix it, close the books. But with the, with the police calls, we don't have that piece, and to wait until there's already five, and send me a letter saying I'm at five, I can't really interact at that point and do what I need to do, because of the length of time it takes to get through the court systems from time to time. So I really, I know that IT people are working on it, but if we can nail, maybe the ordinance needs to wait until the IT can catch up, but we don't need to have that gray area of, well, we're gonna try, and we're gonna get together, and we're gonna decide, and we're gonna, well, you know, hammer down, you either got five or you don't, and we need to know, you either got seven or you don't. Corrective action letter versus citation, I think that's where one of my colleagues was talking about, and I really do believe that you are not in the business of managing my properties, I get that, but the corrective action letter, when you get it and you fix it, and within 24 hours or 48 hours, it's done and it's over with, that shouldn't be a hit on me, that my tenant didn't take the trash can back around the house by midnight of the next day. And for some reason, the officer on the street that week decides that that's gonna be something they're gonna write a letter about to me. Usually, it's already done before the letter even gets to my house, or before the kid gets home and sees the sign on the door that said, "Take your trash can to the back of the house." The cars, we randomly do get just abandoned vehicles, and I've called more than once to say, "We don't know who this car belongs to. Please, don't hit me with that," because that's me doing, I'm not really a victim, it's just an abandoned car, and I'm trying to find out who's decided to park it there. Sometimes it's even a tagged car, and we don't know who it belongs to, and we're trying to track down, why is that car on my land in my backyard? Technically trespassing, I guess, Mr. Bota, but not officially a person, it's a vehicle that's trespassing. So I don't know where that fits. So I'd like to, I personally would advocate for you changing and getting rid of the word corrective action letter, and make it to where it's, if it reaches the point of a citation, nail me. I mean, nail these guys that aren't doing crap, to keep the neighborhoods right. I don't like it either. It brings my property values down. It keeps me from getting good tenants. I have people that'll come to me and say, so-and-so's, you know, their trash can stinks, can you talk to their landlords, even then get a new garbage can? So I mean, they don't like some of this stuff either, so I'm all for it, but I think we need to look at the citation level, not just a corrective action letter. And that's where I thought some of that data would help to kind of spell it out, like, how many corrective action letters are sent, and how many are really still languishing in the court system, before you guys like move this forward to a final thing. And just a general observation in listening, because I wasn't planning to speak, but just in the general observation of listening, there's so much about this ordinance, that we do have a great relationship right now with the folks that are directing it, we understand. I don't think there's a better set of people that I've worked with in a long time, as kind and conscientious as our chief of police and as Susan. I mean, she's, she understands the picture, and she really will go through the process, I think, and look at the cases, and make those decisions. But that's a lot of subjective, that's being very subjective, and it really does then open questions for everybody. I mean, if this is gonna be a rule, it's a rule, so the objectiveness needs to be somewhere in the legislation too. Because right now, I don't think, I don't think anybody here would like nail somebody who's trying, but in five years, you don't know who's gonna be in these seats. So it worries me, once a rule is written, the rule is written. So, thank you, that's my soapbox for tonight.
Thank you. Isn't Ted?
Susan, I have your data, I have some data in front of me, if we want to share that. So I have data from September, that talk about our calls, just Susan's stuff. So we've had almost 8,000 violations total in 2017. 4,000 of those have been brought into compliance. 3,600 are still open, but in their compliance period. I've had 264 non-compliant. And of those, 88 received citations, and 176 were cleaning lanes.
Were what?
Cleaning lanes.
And that was a hundred?
176.
Was it 176?
Cleaning lanes are when we get citations, we don't pay it, we come, we invoice you, because you cut the grass.
I'll go through that again. So, almost 8,000 violations-
For the month, the year?
The year, 2017. Sorry.
This is year-to-date?
Yes.
Through September.
Yeah, I'm sorry, through September. 4,000 have been brought into compliance. 3,600 are still in their compliance period, but are open. And then the non-compliant total is 264, 88 of those being citations, and 176 being cleaning lanes, where we get a contractor to fix whatever the problem is.
And I will say, a typical year, I know this past calendar year, we issued about 12,500 corrective action letters, and we're definitely on par to do the same for this year, which is very high. We should not be that high. And I see the letters that are going out, and more often than not, property owners are waiting for us to tell them when their properties need to be cut, when trash needs to be picked up. I'm not saying it's you guys, I'm just saying that the inspectors are having to act as property managers for some, not all.
So the total non-compliant percentage for this year is 7%. We're not talking about many properties out of, you know, however many properties we have in the city, but we know who they are, and this is a mechanism to fix that, and it's not, it's not the folks in the room.
So to only do them for citations, when it gets to the point of fines, is not really fixing the issue. We need to get, we need to get everybody to the point of maintaining their properties, where we're not having to send out city services, because every time we have to send someone out, it's costing us money. The inspectors shouldn't have to be dealing with the minor stuff, they should be dealing with the more severe issues, because we do have the severe issues out there, that are being taught about cutting grass.
Can I have a call up for you? You can go up to the microphone.
Susan, I understand what you're saying completely, but your, what you just said gives everybody the wrong impression, I think. It doesn't give what happens out there every day. I see the day after a storm, by four o'clock the next day, if a limb's been down on a property, I get a letter, a notice of corrective violation, the next day. My personal house, when we had a storm a few weeks ago, I had limbs I couldn't get to for two or three days. You guys are on top of your job. I know that, and we all know that. We have evictions around the first of the month, if- evictions around the first of the month. If I evict somebody at 9:30, I've got a letter by four o'clock that afternoon to clean up the eviction trash. Not saying I shouldn't get it, but we all know it has to sit there for two days. So just because some landlords, you're saying, use you as their, to tell them when their grass needs cutting, you guys do an awesome job of staying on top of that also. So that percentage of landlords that you're saying use you as their maintenance person, I don't think speaks for the whole. So going back to my original point, this code is going to punish some landlords that are trying to do the right thing because of a handful of bad apples.
We have about a dozen properties a year that are really, I want to say that they're the chronic, the chronic properties.
But why bring down the other 2,000 for the 12?
We have to have strong laws in order to combat these properties. If we don't, I've got no teeth to deal with these properties.
Here's the, here's the situation. It's like every business that was ever invented, you spend 90% of the time talking about 10% of the people because they're the problem. But the issue is, if you can't, it's going to take a two-by-four to get those, that 10% to comply. You have to agree, the numbers that we just quoted are ridiculous. They are. 8,000 and 4,000, 3,600, I think was the number, that haven't been corrected yet. We may be preaching to the choir, and I apologize for that. But by the same token, the residents who have to live next door to these properties, what recourse do they have if we don't look out for them? And that's the issue, and that's the balance we're trying to go through. I say again, we have listened to what you've said. From where we started to where we are now, I think is a reasonable agreement. But going beyond this, we're, if the teeth are completely gone, we're lost. Because it's going to go 8,000. And the other thing is, people who want to get into the business here are going to look at what our history is and say, "Hey, wait a minute, these guys are serious." So we may not have in the future some of the guys who were the troublemakers. And I think that that is the ultimate goal. The ultimate goal, we're not, we're not making these laws. Laws are not made for 90% of the people. They're not. They're made for 10% of the people. And, you know, I think we've come to a reasonable conclusion to this process. And I understand, I understand from a business side, I used to get frustrated when I used to get citations from, and we had no control over it, it was our next-door neighbor that dumped on our properties. All those kinds of things. That's part of the business, and we've got to, we've got to somehow hold the people that are the troublemakers accountable. And that's what we're trying to do. So don't take it personal. Please don't. We know there are good landlords. We do.
I don't know if it would work or not, but I've said it in the office, that it would make more sense to have a tenant go get a license to be able to rent in the city of Salisbury than to keep making it stricter and stricter and stricter on the property owner. Has anybody ever thought of that? Is it probably not legal, but it would make a lot more sense. If the police department knows that they're a drug dealer or convicted felon, city doesn't want them living there, don't give them a license. They can't, they can't go, they can't live in your city.
Well, the issue is sad to say that some of the people that are living in the rentals can't afford, we just had a discussion about 100 bucks. 100 bucks to some of these people is what they're going to make.
But then when it comes time for landlord registration, they always say it goes on to the tenant, and it sounds like it's on its way to 100 bucks again anyway. So it's one way or the other. Thank you for that.
I think, I think we've really had, I think we've had enough discussion on this. Richard, you can't say "good morning" in one.
I get it, what you're trying to do. And you need teeth, and you need some bullets. I've been talking with Susan for a year, maybe two years, about a property that is very close to a property that I own, that is just ruining the neighborhood. And I know she's frustrated, trying to find a means to get this taken care of. Basically, what we're saying up here is, we want you to be able to hit these people, we just don't want to get hit in the back of the head ourselves with the same bat. I've been coming up here probably for 40 years, watching these types of things go on. And essentially, what I see is, every year, we'll pass some additional legislation, and the same people who have always complied continue to comply, and the same people who never comply continue to never comply, and nothing changes. And so what I would say is, I think, I speak for all of us, we are 100% behind your focus and concentration on these 12 or whatever the number is, the chronic bad ones, because it's making it bad for all of us. And anything that we can do to help you with that without getting shot ourselves, we're glad to help you do.
I got a great idea. Why don't you guys get together and buy those properties and turn them into good tenants? Thank you very much for your input, we appreciate it. Do we have consent? Yes.
Oh, actually, one thing. The comment about the police department notifying property owners, I don't know if you want to put that in there or not, but that's going to be really hard to do with just daily operations there. I don't, every day, our calls for service are posted online. You could do it once a week, have somebody in your office do it. You could put it into an Excel spreadsheet and import the data. Theo has already offered to help you all do this, because I don't even, it's a little above my head, too. But then you could just then, like, Ctrl+F4, and it would be very easy for you. I'm not explaining it well. Versus putting that on, on our, whoever in the police department that is already overworked and, you know, has a lot going on, I think it would be more reasonable to have the property owners look for that.
Look for?
Keep tabs.
It's posted every day.
I know some of them do, but I think part of the issue is, you know, when you've got, where they use a property as a check-in, or there's a call, like, sometimes they even get the property wrong. I think the concern is, is to know what's going to be a qualified service, and then how are we going to efficiently notify the property. I think that's the system that we got to figure out, if we're going to hit them with a point. I think, and that's part, I think, their concern as well. Or any, any of, you know, whether it's a homeowner, and they get dinged with a point on that. So I think the system is, how are we going to do this efficiently? And have a system, you know, where they're making the qualified decision that, hey, okay, yeah, this situation counts as a point. My concern is, there's, you know, you might have thousands of potential calls that could fall into that category, and that's a lot of time that we're going to have somebody sifting through to decide what situation is or is not, you know. That's just my, that's the only piece of it that I have a concern about, that who's going to be doing that, and then can we do that in a timely fashion?
Well, I think, we got to, we got to remember, first of all, I agree, I don't want any of our police doing anything but police. I mean, we have enough, we have enough issues that we need to keep on top of, that I think that that is something that's just, to be honest, time-consuming and a waste of our money. However, if it is posted, there's always, always the appeal thing that we talked about, that if you see one, and you get one of these things, you call them and say, "Wait a minute, that's not right," because it can be taken off, as we had spoken about last week and the week before. It can be removed if there's an issue. Because you've already, if you're going to get really dinged, you've already got five, what's five or six, five now? We've reduced it to five?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. And then one police.
One police call.
So by you get to that point, you're watching close. If you're up at six, you're going to be watching, I'm sure. So on those particular properties. I really wouldn't want to play it unless it can be done automated.
Well, that's the, yeah.
But automated is, right now, it's posted every day. So the information is available daily.
Daily.
And if there's a question on it, somebody can call and say, "Is this going to be gaged or not?"
Susan, you said something about trying to get the technology to talk to one another. Is that com-aid?
It is not. It's a...
Really?
It is not.
It's a different...
It's a, yeah.
One, Mr. President.
Never mind, I won't even go there. Okay.
Mr. President, there's one, one suggestion I might make. If you're concerned, this concern I heard tonight expressed, was they won't know about police calls. We're now going to notify them at five, we could lower that number, so they would still have, we could notify them at four.
Four.
And so then they, you know.
We could do that.
And then they, then they would be on notice, "I better start keeping an eye on things because there's trouble at this house," but...
Three, three would be sufficient, because that's a halfway mark.
That's a good point.
Partially, you're halfway, so if you're going to seven, and you have three, that gives you enough time to watch your property, watch your tenant, to see what's going on. I think five is a little too far, too far ahead to even grasp it, because one, two could, the other two could happen spontaneously. So I would think three would be fine.
We went to four instead of five. Notification.
Whatever you want. I think four's good.
You all right with that? Okay. All right. If we do that, we have consensus?
I say three. I'm just saying three because...
Four. Jim? Party?
Is he still there?
Four, it, four sounds better to me. We have to keep in mind the lower the number, and then the larger number of notifications the city will have to be sending out, the greater the expense. And also, it triggers the action for the landlords who are with eviction procedures. So I say four will be appropriate.
Thank you, sir. All right. Do we have consensus now, moving forward with the changes?
No.
All right, we have consensus. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Are you still keeping it corrective action in there? Because that was a decision I had too.
Yes. Yes.
Several of us mentioned that you should, on the citation level. Was that a consensus of law?
Yeah, consensus with the changes we discussed.
That was leaving corrective action letters as a hint.
Was that, was that word in there, or was it violation?
Violation.
The word was violation.
What is a violation then? It's any letter. It's a corrective action letter.
Well, I mean, I do recall, the mayor did say that if it's taken care of, it doesn't count.
Yeah.
That's what...
That's what we're saying, it should be citation, not corrective action.
That's what the mayor, he had mentioned that last we were discussing.
He did.
Did he leave that with you?
Is that...
He told me he wanted violation.
He wanted violation. He wanted violation.
But, so...
But the question for me is, is that if you've got to go, even if you get it done each time, if it's over and over and over again that you have to go there, even though it's getting done, you're still having to go there, over and over, and over and over again. The idea is to get it done when it's supposed to get done. The action, whatever it is, the shivers, the shingles, the feature, the sock, the grass.
So I guess the question is, is at what point do we accrue a point? That's the crux of it.
When it's written out.
When it's a...
When it's written up and not...
A violation.
That's a point.
Wait, I heard two different things. A notice of violation, your warning, or a corrective action letter.
Same thing.
So...
Same thing.
Or your citation, excuse me.
Citation is the corrective action letter didn't get taken care of in a timely manner. And that's when they assess the fine.
Right, so what are we saying we're doing?
Just when it's written out.
Okay.
Mr. Boda.
Which is what the mayor...
I just heard two different things.
The current law talks about corrective action letters as a call for service. But the difference I see here is, we've gone from five to seven now. So in other words, you know, the chances of someone, let's say someone keeps a pristine property and has a wonderful tenant, the chance of getting seven corrective action letters on the same property in a year, that's a property that has problems, would be my guess. But, but we, you have gone up with that number, so that should give...
I think that was the other piece of it, the number went up.
Yeah.
So the mayor wants to leave violation?
That was my understanding.
Okay. Could we just verify that with the mayor? Okay. And if the mayor's... I understand, but I want to make sure, I want to hear it from the mayor's...
When I asked...
Because I'll tell you, I had a couple of things that I switched on after doing some research. And I just want to make sure he has the opportunity to...
I don't want to open up the can of worms, but wouldn't it be reasonable to decrease the count and say, if you're getting citations, if you get three citations, you're in trouble? Because that's what we're saying, is, in effect, is, we're not trying to give us more leeway and go to citations, which will, you'll never get us for citations. I will, because you're taking it low.
Never said never.
I've only gotten one citation with snow in 2010. But if you decrease the number, but it was citations, because very few people are getting citations from your data, but they're the bad ones. So you really only want, like, three citations, and maybe you're in trouble. You're going to get dragged in the court, you're going to lose that house. And for everyone that's performing on the 8,000 or 12,500 letters and citations and all that, it sucks for you to write them. It's not good that we get letters, but if you're performing... Yeah. Anyway, I'm not trying to open up Pandora's box on this thing, but maybe, maybe the number decreases from seven to something, maybe it's four or five citations, including a PD call or two PD call, whatever it is.
Let's do this. Let's ask the mayor to confirm what he had said. If it's the same as what he, what he said last week, we'll make the change. If it isn't, then we'll bring it back up and vote on it, to see if we have consensus. We'll come back to work session. All right? Does that make sense? Party, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's what we'll do. We'll check with the mayor, make sure he gets, we get the clarification. If there is a difference, it'll come back to work session. If not, we'll, it'll proceed as we stated. Okay? It'll be on, it'll be on the work session agenda, or it'll be on next week's council meeting. Okay? All right, thank you. Don't move.
I'm not moving.
Next one up is Airbnb legislation.
I have in front of you a piece of legislation. It's titled, "Limited Residential Lodging Units." Yes, it is. Same thing as Airbnb. And the reason I titled it as such is because that's what the state of Maryland Senate Bill 463 has titled theirs. They just created the Senate Bill enacting law, passing, passing the law for the, their version of the Airbnb, and they've titled theirs, "Limited Residential Lodging Units." And I have modeled a lot of this after that. And then I've also brought in some of the language from our landlord licensing, changing it up a bit. And this is what I have. It's basically renting any unit for less than 30 days in the city. And it would, the renewal would, or the registration process would be from July 1st to June 30th. I have attached a fee schedule also at the end. But the only thing really different with this than with the landlord licensing is that each year, upon renewal, we would have to inspect the unit, not like we do with the landlord licensing. Because landlord licensing... Because landlord licensing, we, we try to inspect every three years. This we would inspect every year. And I'll justify why we wanna do that. One is we wouldn't have as many as we have registered rental units as we do the Airbnb. And then second is if we have people going in and out, or on a transient basis, I want us to be able to go in and inspect. Cause I just want to make sure that the, it is co-compliant. And when you have people coming in and out like that, there may be more, um, things go wrong. Just, I just wanna make sure that everything is, is okay. Um, it's, cause it's more of like on a commercial use than it would be permanent residential use.
Is this, um, would the regular bidding practice fall under this as well?
It would not. We have, we have, um, bed and breakfast legislation. That's just in the new town, but it's not the same. Um, this, this is specifically just for the, well, just like the Airbnb. So if you have, if you want to, um, if you're going away for the weekend, you just wanna rent your house out, rent it out for the weekend, or for a week, or anything up to thirty days. Anything beyond thirty days. I know, Mark, you had a question here. Um, Mark has a couple of questions here. He had a bold to go over. And I thought I put this in here, Mark. Maybe I did not, about the thirty days. I thought, maybe I put this under definitions about the transient.
Yeah, it is. It, the, the thirty days refers to, in other words, the, the guests would be staying for thirty days or
What number are you?
She's now referring to the, my questions were under one oh one through one oh five. They were the bold stuff. In other words, do you wanna regulate these other issues?
Yeah.
And then the, the other issue that, that comes up in this is that I think to some degree, this activity in an R five or a district it could very well just be illegal, the way the law is currently written. So, uh, you know, that would need to be looked at and probably run through, you know, planning commission for them to take a look at that. For example, if I, you know, rented my house for a week to a family from out of town, it's a single-family neighborhood, so that should be fine for that single family to stay there for a week. But if I'm doing this repeatedly to the point where it becomes a bed and breakfast, because I don't, you know, you know, I'm, people are in there every week, then I think the argument could be made that it's now a bed and breakfast. And that, and, and that would not be allowed under the current zoning law in an R five district. So, you know, that, we need to look at that. That the zoning issue as well as this regulatory issue.
My understanding with the two different, okay, and I guess we need to, we need to discuss that because my understanding with the two different is, what is the difference between the bed and breakfast? There's a difference between the bed and breakfast and just being a straight rental. And you can rent in the R district.
Yes, you can. But, um
Because it's transient use? Is that?
Well, for example, you know, theoretically, if this were a high enough demand community, like San Francisco or a place like that, um, you could go into this business and I, of owning ten houses in a single-family neighborhood and just operating them as small hotels, you know, indefinitely. So you need to look at the zoning part of that side. This, this ordinance is for, you know, chapter fif, you know, chapter fifteen of the building code. But you wanna make sure that, that people understand where they can and cannot do this under this current zoning laws. And if we needed to make some change in the zoning laws, then that would need to be done.
I guess the other thing is, I mean, how do you moniker this?
How do you, how do you know? Would you just stumble upon it on, on the
You'd have to check it on Airbnb dot, or the app.
It's not the only app. There's several too.
What did, does this one going through, I don't know, or tell her?
That's what my question was. Is there somebody who's been through this and get, get a piece of legislation that's, that sort of covers the, that would be my thought. Called Jim Peck. Jim Peck. Jim Peck would know.
Yeah.
See, the issue we got is, this is gonna have, like, the National Folk Festival. This is gonna be, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. President, one, one issue that might deal with that is you could permit, for example, someone, it says less than thirty days, but you could say no more than sixty days in a year. That, you know, if, if you, which would be the difference between a bed and breakfast, which could be operated year-round. If you, you can put limits on it. And I think other communities have limited, you know, the number of days per year that you would be allowed to do this within the zoning laws. But that's, I mean, you're, I think you're gonna get a lot of neighbor complaints if the house next door to him is just turned into a
Yeah.
summer rental.
Well, would that be the ideal situation? So where there's not the turnaround like that? So it's just that the houses are not just turned into basic hotels?
I think the big concern for most people in the community is gonna be that they, they don't wanna see their houses bought by investors to be turned into many hotels throughout the neighborhood. Cause I think that would be a worst-case scenario for politically, as well as for quality of life.
I think, I think, uh, that's a good point, but I think Mr. Irtin's comment, uh, makes a lot of sense. I think we need to get a hold of
Yeah.
You weren't supposed to see that, Adam.
Trust me, I used to be a teacher too. And I could see you out of my ear. I think we'd be, got a, a good idea to ask Jim Peck to look at it. Uh, if he doesn't know it, you don't need to know it.
Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah. And then, and then let's bring it back and talk about it. We, you know, this is kinda
I think he's on vacation this week too. So, that's what he said to me Saturday.
Yeah, I think he is. I think he is. I think he's in Colorado, but that's all right.
Yes, so he wasn't gonna worry about what time he was gonna wake up, just in time to take a nap.
Um, let's, let's get this, let's do that, contact it. I like that idea of, at the minimum of this, of the sixty days. Because then, yeah, no one's gonna buy a house to rent it for sixty days. I mean, turn it into a bed and breakfast for sixty days. But it does give the opportunity during it, big events and the like, festivals and the like
Marathon.
To do it. Marathons. Seagull century.
I can tell you I filled my house up during the seagull century with cousins.
So that would be a, we, no more than sixty days.
Yeah, we just, I think, I, I can't remember which town it was that did it, but one of the towns I think capped it at sixty days, and that was their solution.
Jim will tell you right off the top of his head.
Okay.
All right. Good. Consensus? Bring it back?
Yeah.
And I'd like to, I would like to weigh in on the next piece. If I'm allowed.
Oh, really?
I'm sorry.
Pushing your luck, but go ahead.
I have, I do have one question about the Airbnb thing. Would the Wycomico hotel tax apply to that? Because that tax does go to the zoo. That would be up to the county if they wanted to do that.
It's, it's just a rental, so it might not be.
I'll have a seat in number one.
No, you can sit there. I'll wait. I can hear you.
It's Mark, so I just wanna
Mrs. Tillman, hardship waiver.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is kind of modeled, uh, the language that we got here and the means we sort of just stole from the state court system. That's where we got the, the standards to be applied. This would be applied by the Board of Appeals, who would be hearing the case. And the members of the board would just make a determination as to whether or not it was appropriate to waive the individual's fee based on the information supplied. Um, in the court system, that's done by the judge. You know, if you apply to waive the appeal fee, the judge looks at it and says if you think, and it gives some of them some broad discretion. So if you've got an individual with huge health issues and, and can, who can't pay their bills, that they, they would be entitled to this exemption. Uh, as well as someone who may have other income.
I was trying to assess, can we, can we get a sense that there is a large number of these sitting out there? We talk about the chronic nuisance properties. And we talk about the twelve, the twelve that we're talking about. None of those twelve need a waiver. None of these people who were with us earlier need a waiver. Who is it that needs a waiver? Who has come to us and said?
Hardy, Hardy had, I think Hardy brought it up. Hardy?
And I have.
You have?
Yeah.
Can you, can you, uh, you had spoken about the hardship waiver before.
Yeah, I talked about when we were initially discussing the, uh, nuisance property, the lack of general individual for bonus incomes.
Could you, could you just, could you just some, could you just summarize for us? Where, where
You should be allowed to engage in all of these processes and then money. Income should never be, uh, this incentive for a personal appealing. Something that could impact them in a leisure way. You know, even as drafted, you know, the, the ID manager says that if you fail, you have to pay a hundred dollars. But if an individual doesn't have your hundred dollars at the time, they, you won't have an act of wrath. We want people to engage in these processes. You know, there's very little game by putting people out of their properties or making them subject to severe penalties and not giving them an opportunity. Will engage in a process of putting this incentives for them to engage in the process. I, I just think that it should be more permitted and not, and, and, and not sort of obstacle after obstacle after obstacle.
Okay. April, you said you had
Yes, I have, I have a family right now who is
If I have X number of calls on my property and I'm a renter, I should be able to engage in that process. And I shouldn't be just allowed to engage in it because I don't have one hundred dollars to spend.
Gotcha. April, April's got a, some comments as well.
Yes, I have a family right now who is going through the same identical thing. Um, actually where they are, um, disabled. Income is limited, and they can't perform some of the duties, and neither can they afford to really pay to have this done. So they're in a dilemma of how are they gonna get this done if they have to pay a hundred dollar fine or fee for not being able to get this done? So that hardship waiver would come into play for them. It would give them enough time to at least try to save some money or try to figure out something to help them get this done.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Hardy. Thank you, April.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, so, Mark, you can, essentially the ordinance is reflective of that.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I was gonna bring to your attention is that the way this is worded now, if the person, um, got the fee waived, appealed the case and lost the appeal, there would be an option to continue to waive that fee, or the, the board could assess the fee based on the financial information provided. Um, so in other words, it allows them to look at it twice. You may want them to just make the determination the first time and, and I, that was something that hadn't been discussed, what we would do in the situation where someone had their appeal fee waived, and then really it turns out did not have a, a real basis for appeal, what do you do?
Hardy, did you hear that comment?
I, I couldn't hear clearly. Are we talking about the fact that they have the opportunity for a final review, even if they're failed to
That's, yeah, that's, that's what Mark has in there now. And he's saying that wasn't in the No, he, he was saying that that's what, that's in there now, but it, you know, it doesn't have to be, but, uh, to me, I could go either way on it, to be honest. Um, it at least gives us the option, you know, depending on the circumstance. Would the same, uh, the question would be, the same Board of Appeals would do, would make that to determination?
They would make that. I guess what that would avoid is you can always have someone who is, has no money, who is judgment-proof, who just appeals everything to the point where it becomes almost abusive, and they have no recourse, cause it's always free to do it. And I, I think this way, the board could say, you know, you really had no justification for this appeal. We're gonna make you pay the hundred dollars.
Well, and I think also, when you look at, uh, on the first page, under C on line thirty-two, you know, to grant the waiver, it says the board shall consider whether the person requests a fee waiver is receiving services from a state or federal program, serving low income, and whether the household income is equal or less than that which would qualify for one of the low-income programs, and, uh, whether there is any other factor that may be relevant to the person's ability to pay the fee. So certainly if someone who's got a hundred properties coming in, they're gonna be able, they're not gonna qualify under this. But if it's a single elderly lady who's limited income and, you know, maybe she was in a hospital for a couple of weeks and she got a citation, couldn't get it done due to health problems, and she gets, has to go to the board, I mean
I think that quasi, that, that's got way too much power in the board to decide whether or not the, the employee, and we've consistently done that
So if she took it to district court, what's gonna happen?
Well, if you appeal in the court system, the court can waive the fee, but they're gonna go through a process similar to that. The, I, I just give you, there's, there's an example of an individual whose name I will not use, when we were representing the county, who we were in court with all the time. He was sort of penniless from, as it appeared from the outside, with junk cars in his yard. And he, he, I mean, everybody knew him. And because he was appealing everything. And there would come a point where you would want the board to be able to say enough is enough. You know more free appeals. Put up your hundred bucks. So that, that's the only thing. And I feel like you ought to give the board that option when you're dealing with an individual like that.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Okay. You wanna weigh in?
And I think the person should, show proof of their burden.
I, I would like to weigh in.
Way away.
Well, since seven, section seventeen twelve is being brought to counsel, um, the appeal section seventeen point twelve point one one zero. It, some of the language is still very old. It says, um, the
What line is it?
Uh, it's actually right past. You got, I'm sorry. I didn't bring copies for you guys. You don't have it?
No.
It's in the code. Um, I should've brought copies for you guys. I, I got this last minute. The next section, right past where you guys are, it talks about the appeals process, and I'll read this to you. It says, um, appeals to the board may be taken by any person agreed by any officer, department, board, or bureau, any municipality affected by the decision of the building inspector. It goes on to talk about the building inspector, and it says such appeal shall be taken within a reasonable time. So there is no time period that you have to submit the appeal. So right now, when we write up a sign or any zoning violation, there is no time period in which you have to submit the appeal. That puts the code enforcement officer in disadvantage, so really, basically, they, there is no appeal period. So there has to be a dead, deadline.
So a defined appeal time.
Yeah, so we, we just ran into that issue, because we, we were reading one of the letters, and they said, oh gosh, there is no appeal period.
Yeah, that, that's definitely an appropriate change in the current law. It, you don't have to do it with this, obviously, but clearly it should be done.
Coming, I thought, we need to hurry up and change this, cause right now my letters aren't good that we're sending out. So I, I was wondering, I was hoping that maybe we could add this to this current legislation, or that's what you guys are working on?
Just, just send me the material, it's all amended.
I need to hurry up and get this in, because I need to get my letters good.
Get it to Mark.
Okay. And then if you could also just change, um, everywhere where it says building inspector to, um, housing official. And then I'll get it to you, because I, I have a couple more places where I think that the, um, it's got some antiquated language. And I'll just send it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Could you get it, could you get it out to us before the meeting, so we can look at it, Mark? The final?
Yeah.
It's, it's not much. I actually give you what I have.
It sounds like it's a pretty, you know, appropriate and quick fix.
I'll give you, give you what I have right now.
Okay, good.
Good.
It's very easy.
All right.
I just don't want my letters to be
Thanks, Susan.
Not gonna go ahead, what I'm saying right now.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have consensus then to move this forward?
Yes.
We lost Hardy, so, maybe he'll call back, but. We gotta take a break? Thirty seconds. We have to, uh, take a thirty-second break while we change discs.